It is six o'clock and I call this regular school board meeting to order. It is May ninth, 2016. Thank you all for being here and we have a full house today. I know we have a lot of presentations, so we'll go ahead and get started with our Pledge of Allegiance. I know that we have some students here to lead us in the pledge. Ms. Salazar.
Ms. Peterson, the members of the board. We do have students here to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to introduce the principal for Los Cuates Middle School, Ms. Alma Atkinson, to introduce us to some students. I appreciate that, but it'll be a couple more minutes, so if you don't mind my way, we'll hear a little bit about our students first. Ms. Atkinson.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. I am so excited to present to you here today, Ms. Giovanna Godoy. Giovanna is an eighth grade student at Los Cuates Middle School. She is the daughter of Esther Godoy. Gio, as her friends kindly call her, loves being involved in school. She is vice president of Student Council, a cheerleader, she plays sports, and she maintains an A honor roll in all her pre-AP classes. Her mother is her biggest supporter of all her goals and achievements. Next, I'd like to introduce Eliana Ibarra. She is also an eighth grade student at Los Cuates. She is the daughter of Marco and Ilda Ibarra. This school year has been the best for Eliana because she is the president of the Student Council and she is so close to attending high school. She hopes to join the Performing Arts Department next school year and we are very proud of Eliana at Los Cuates.
Next, representing the Resaca Middle School Administration, Mr. Escareño, Assistant Principal at Resaca Middle School.
Good evening, Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. I'd like to start by introducing Adalberto Rodriguez. He's an eighth grade student at Resaca Middle School. He's an excellent student athlete. He's the son of Edith Garza and Adalberto Rodriguez. He likes to help anyone in need, always offers help to elders, and is very humble. He's always wants everyone to be treated with respect and has never felt superior to any other classmates. He loves to spend hours with his grandfather fishing, hunting, or just out in the ranch. He's always willing to treat his mother to nice meals and every now and then cooks, cleans, and takes care of his seven-year-old sister. He has a very big, kind heart. He's very passionate about football. He wants to become a federal agent once he graduates. Thank you, Adalberto Rodriguez. Next, I want to introduce sixth grade student Rebecca Sanchez. She is the daughter of Mr. Daniel Sanchez, who's a teacher at Resaca Middle School. Becky is a percussionist in band and is involved in UIO listening skills and impromptu speaking this year. She's hoping to join many of Resaca's sports teams next year. Becky was this year's Valentine's Sweetheart, nominated for Homecoming Duchess, and ran for Student Council Treasurer. Rebecca Sanchez.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this exercise, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one community.
If you can please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Are the parents here of these students? If you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? Thank you, thank you students. We can move on to item number four, roll call. Mr. Amaya.
Yes, Madam President, Mr. Alin Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Tavino.
Present.
Jesus Amaya, I'm present. Mr. Yanel Garza.
Present.
Mr. Martín Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Ray Farias.
Present.
Ms. Sandra Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Gonzales Salazar.
Present.
And our councilman, Mr. Robert Vina.
Thank you. Item number five, district recognitions. I know we have several to go ahead and talk about. Mr. Salazar, can you go ahead and help us with that, please?
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, members of the board. Once again, we've set time aside during our regular meeting to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. And here to introduce us to our students and their sponsors, Mr. Justin Stunbaugh, CTE Director.
Good evening, Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. I am proud to recognize four of our CTSO programs this evening. DECA, VIDA, Falcon Law, and FTC Robotics. These students presented tonight represented hard work and preparation payoff for success. First, we're going to start with our DECA students. These students are from LFU. We had three in our first year advance to the state competition in San Antonio, so we'll start with them first. Brianna Alex. George Moya. Enrique Valencia. I'm going to go ahead and introduce our high school DECA students and the students tonight are all state qualifiers, which advanced to the state competition this past February in San Antonio. Our first high school DECA student is Yamila De La Rosa. Alberto Escobedo. Alexandra Garcia. Luis Garza. This student was our national qualifier who just a couple weeks ago competed in Nashville. We're very proud of that. Miranda Gonzalez. Anna Islas. Nicholas Rodriguez. And I also like to introduce our sponsors, our LFU sponsors, Ms. Janie Pettis. Mr. Carlos Bruce is also a sponsor, but he cannot be here tonight. And our high school sponsor, Ms. Kristy Vargas.
The parents of these students, if you are here, can you please stand and be recognized?
Thank you, guys. Our next group that will be presented is our VIDA, a Center Volunteer Income Tax Association. These students, and I'm very proud to recognize that they brought in along with various, they did this at the high school, various events where people came in and brought their income tax returns and our students filed them as a volunteer work. They brought in over $778,000 in refunds for Los Fresnos, Texas this year, so we're very proud of that. I'm going to introduce first, Ms. Ashley Corpus. Alyssa Escobar. Sydney Flores. Catherine Gurola. Lourdes Ramírez. And Deyadira Salazar. Their sponsor, Ms. Angie Penya, could not be here tonight, but she wishes congratulations to them on a job well done.
The parents of these students, can you please stand and be recognized?
Thank you, girls, great job. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Falcon Law students. These are students who compete in our law enforcement, law enforcement events. This past couple weeks ago, they went to Crowley, Texas and competed in their state competition and I'm proud to recognize them. First, Emmanuel Delgado. Mariela Gandara. Ivan Edi Gracia, who placed second in state with her teammate Erica Nieto. Edi Leal. Trinidad Leal. Juan Magallanes. Erica Nieto, who also placed second with Ivan Edi in her team competition. Ana Patino. Alexandra Reyna. Abraham Rodriguez. Asoriel Ruiz. And their sponsors, Ms. Tesis Zepeda, who cannot be here tonight, and Ms. Cheryl Quintero, who is here tonight.
The parents of these students, can you please stand and be recognized?
Thank you.
Thank you, students.
Next, I would like to present our LFHS FTC Robotics Team. This was the first year that we did FTC Robotics. As you can see, they brought the robot in there. It's a neat, a neat activity, a neat little project that they did. It placed them at the regional competition. A lot of them are underclassmen, so we're expecting them to grow and continue to blossom in that area. I'd like to introduce first, Ms. Jennifer Barone. Rosa Linda Barone. Isaac Escareño. Isaiah Martinez. And Casey Zepeda. And their sponsors, we have two sponsors, Mr. Albert Tudon and Mr. David Burlingame. I think we asked for a demonstration, so we're going to see if we can do one real quick.
This was not in the script, but it's a verb light.
Every year, the challenge is a little different and you get the specifications and then how much time do you have after your... So students learn skills in isolation ahead of the kickoff and then... Very proud. How about another round of applause for them, please?
Very impressive, thank you. And the parents of these students, if you are here, please stand and be recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next, several groups are going to be athletics and for that, we call on Coach Brown, our athletic director, head football coach. Welcome, Coach.
See if I can get this right this time. Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. Only took me ten or twelve times to do it. I know I told you I wouldn't wear a suit again. I'm sorry, I lied, I was forced into it today. And I'm not sure if I can top kids building robots. I thought that thing was going to shoot at me for a second. I'm a little concerned. But we have some fantastic things going on in athletics. We have everything from district champions to regional champions, to state champions, to possible state champions, to teams that are still in the playoffs. Some important upcoming dates. This Thursday, we play Laredo Alexander, a very good team that won their district. We get to play them at University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Stadium, which is going to be a, I don't know how we got them to drive down here for three games in a row, but they are going to drive down here, so we're excited about that. That's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Saturday, we have a young man, and I tried to research this, who's going to be running a hundred meter dash. He's one of the top eight or nine fastest kids in the state of Texas right now in the 6A level. Pretty dang impressive, if you consider Houston and Dallas and Austin and all those places. I'll be going up there to watch that, very, very excited about that. And then last but not least, May 27th, we're going to have our spring game in our stadium. We want everybody to come out and make it a big affair. We're going to break up the teams equally, break up the coaches, not allow them to talk to each other for a few days and have a lot of fun. So hopefully, everybody will come out for that. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to introduce four of our teams that have had some tremendous success. We're going to start with our tennis coach, Coach Sandler.
Good evening, Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. I'm here with tennis, obviously. I'd just like to say a little bit, the player has been with our program for four years. Came with limited success, with limited experience, starting out as a freshman, worked her way up to number one the last two years. She almost qualified a couple years ago in mixed doubles and we made it this year in singles, girl's singles. I'd like to present Larissa Lopez, regional qualifier. And I'd like to introduce my new assistant coach, Jesús Cuchetes. Been with me this first year. I look forward to some great things in the future.
Are the parents here of this student? If you are, please stand and be recognized.
Our next program we'd like to recognize, it's so rare to say you're the best program in the state of Texas, but this one is. And when they walk in places, I've seen them myself, they make people fear them. And they don't look very fearsome right now, but when you see them lifting weights, it is an amazing sight. So Coach Evans does an amazing job. I'd like to have him introduce our powerlifting team.
Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. It's a great pleasure and honor to talk about these athletes who've done great things for the district. Some of the numbers I'm about to draw, if we introduce some of them, will astonish you. It seems like every year, we're having kids set state records and some accomplishment out there. We're always doing something special. The girls' team, back-to-back state champs, we're very proud of that. The boys' team, we qualified four boys to state, fourteen, or fourteen girls to state, so we're real proud of that. Let me just start introducing the girls. First up, our 97-pound state champion, state record holder at 310-pound squat, Ali Hyphel. Next, our 105-pound class, state champion, Mandy Sanchez. Our 114-pound weight class, fourth place at state, Joanna Filo. 114-pound, member of our team, close to making it to regionals. We expect her to be there next year, Yenelli Aguilar. 114 sophomore, state qualifier, Summer Sosa. 114-pound, second place at state, Alexis Torres. 123, state qualifier, Brianna Ruiz. 132-pound, state qualifier, she set the state deadlift record, 365 pounds, Lorena Martinez. 148-pound, state champion, state bench record holder, she set it this year at 230 pounds, Julissa Torres. State qualifier at 148 pounds, Alexis Quezada. Regional champion, second place at state, Stephanie Trevino, 148-pound weight class. State qualifier, Sydney Wall, 148-pound weight class. And last but definitely not least, on the girls' team, she's lifted with us for three years, state champion, Julie Torres, 198-pound weight class. Okay, we introduce our boys with our girls. I think you guys got used to us doing that. We have three boys here. First off, first-year lifter as a senior, did great things, got fifth in the state in the 123-pound weight class, Jajay Ortiz. Next, he participated in our team, did great things in his first year. We expect him to go to the state meet next year. 165-pound class, Marqui Fonteca. And also, another athlete very close to making it to regionals. We expect him to be at the state meet, John Salazar, 165-pound weight class. Again, we're very proud of these athletes. A lot of people don't know what they go through. It's not just simply lifting weight. One of the toughest things for them is not the workouts. A lot of times, it's making weight, making no sacrifices, so we're all very proud of them.
Parents, if you are here, please stand and be recognized.
Pretty amazing, some of those kids are squatting me and deadlifting me. That's pretty impressive. Next, I'd like to introduce our district champion, girls' track team, starting with Coach Howard.
Good evening, Ms. Peterson, members of the board and Mr. Salazar, as well as our administrators that are in the building this evening. I'd like to start by thanking you guys for all your support this season. The Lady Falcons competed throughout their season with many solid performances, highlighting their ability early on onto the rest of the competition. For the district meet, it was a stiff competition in the very beginning, but these young ladies fought back at the end to come out strong and on top. They competed with their mission to win three back-to-back titles with sheer will, belief, and heart. They won the meet by four points coming down to the last event. We had all the members of the team qualify for area. At area, the team finished second, but nonetheless, they performed with fearlessness and determination to get to San Antonio. Ten out of the seventeen events were regional qualifiers, including all three relays, which I believe is a first for the program. We had Alyssa Salazar break the area record in 300 hurdles as well at that area meet. Thirteen Lady Falcons advanced to the regionals in their specific events or as an alternate for the relay. So at regionals, the girls competed with all of their heart and might and created a PR in the four-by-two, which was, I believe, also the fastest in program history, this year's four-by-two. Overall, the Lady Falcons represent our program well. We're extremely proud of their season. So here we have Brianna Alex. She's a freshman, she's area regional qualifier in the 100 hurdles and she qualified for regionals in 100 hurdles, 300 hurdles at area. We have Clarissa Diaz. She's our lone distance runner we had on the varsity team, freshman. She ran the 1600, 3200, area qualifier in the 3200 and she was the alternate for the four-by-four at San Antonio. she was the alternate for the four-by-four at San Antonio. For our sophomores, we have Sofia Navarrete, the area regional qualifier in the four-by-one. She's one of our sprinters on the team. Junior, we have Valeria Granados, shot-in discus, area and regional qualifier, discus regional qualifier. Those that could not make it this evening, we have Larissa Cruz, who's a freshman, she's a sprinter, also on the four-by-one, four-by-two, area regional qualifier. Nora Casaneda, area regional qualifier for the relays. Rosie Gutierrez, area regional qualifier, eight-hundred runner for the four-by-four. Alastair Assad, who was the area regional qualifier for the hundred hurdles, and she also broke the area record for the hundred hurdles. She's a triple jumper and long jumper as well, and also on the four-by-four. For juniors, we have Vanessa Cisneros, eight-hundred, four-hundred runner, also a leg on the four-by-four. Tanya Prezzolini, relay specialist, she was on all three relays. Bianca Reyes on the four-by-two area qualifier and pole vault area qualifier. Anika Rubacava, she was the area regional qualifier on the four-by-one and four-by-two. Marioni Rarumba, discus area qualifier. And our last two seniors, we had Denaida Behadon, she was a hurdler on our team, area regional qualifier, alternate four-by-one. And Alondra Escobar, four-by-one, four-by-two, area regional qualifier, two-hundred area regional qualifier, and long jump area regional qualifier. I'd like to take the time briefly to thank the coaches, Coach Ellison for all of his help in the jumps and the hurdles, Coach Falcone in all the distance events, Coach Vela, who's not here with us, helping the sprints and the jumps, and Coach Torres in the jumps and the relays. And also, just briefly, in our program, we had the freshmen come up short this year, they fell short by six points to grasp the title for district, and our JV team won the title this year, so that's three times back-to-back-to-back also. So they did very well, we're very proud of them. Thank you.
The parents of these students, if you are here, please stand and be recognized.
Next, I'd like to introduce our boys' track coach, and a little background on that very quickly. We lost our track coach, he left for another district, everybody makes bad decisions. I think we upgraded big time, I can't say that I'm sad the other guy left, because we got a better one, and that's Coach Ellison.
Excuse me, I've got spring practice, boys, so. Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, I want to thank y'all for your support, how important it is for our young kids to see that it's supported from the very top. I also want to thank Mr. Rodriguez, Coach Brown, and all the teachers, and everybody at FHS, it's been just a fantastic year, and all the support to make our program great comes from y'all, and I appreciate it very much. Just a season overview, we had a hundred-and-ten track athletes, grades nine through twelve this year. We ran five full teams, we had two full freshman teams, we had two full JVs in our varsity team. Our ninth grade team finished third in district, I think it was a six-point, it was very, very close, all the way down to the very end. Our JV was the district champ, and just completely ran away with it, and our varsity was in, came in fourth in district. Also, we finished sixth in the area, and we're looking forward to next year, we've got a lot of young kids coming back. The coaching staff, some of these guys are at spring ball, Coach Foster coached our relays, Craig Foster, Coach Quique Fernandez, he handled all the ninth grade, everything that went on at ninth grade campus, he took care of it, and I appreciate that tremendously. All I had to do is say, "Coach, do you have this hat?" "Yes, sir, Coach, we got it." We were good to go. Coach Marco Hinajosa helped with our sprinters, and Coach Doug Dahlberg with our throwers, and then also, our female coaches were a tremendous help. Coach Torres coached our high jumpers, and they're hiding over there. Coach Howard was also helped with our throws, Coach Falcone with our distance runners, it was a lot of fun. They're also very much out of control. She didn't think I'd say that. To introduce our runners, first off, David Alvarez, David Alvarez qualified for area in the four-by-one, and then was an alternate on the four-by-two that went to regionals. John was a very important part of all three of our relays, he was an area and regional qualifier in the four-by-one, in the regional qualifier in the four-by-two. Danny Garcia. Danny came along late in the year, we were at the district track meet, running the JV four-by-one, and that sucker was the anchor leg, and he was way out in front, stepped it off, I said, "Who is that guy?" And so he earned his way up to get to run at the area meet in the four-by-one. Marqui Fonseca. Area qualifier in the four-by-one and four-by-two, and also in the regional qualifier in the four-by-two. Area qualifier in the four-by-one. Good thing that wasn't a relay the time. Ricardo Torres, he was qualified, he qualified for area in the thirty-two-hundred, and just to let you know, Ricardo ran, over the course of the year, ran the four-hundred, the mile relay, the thirty-two-hundred, the sixteen-hundred, and the eight-hundred, so anybody that wants, there would go another relay the time. Anybody who wants a bit of that action can come on and join him, he's one of our better distance runners. Next up is Everado Garate. And I'm the only guy in the Valley that can actually pronounce his name, his name got butchered at every track meet we went to. Just to say a little bit about Ever, Ever was a long jumper and a triple jumper for us. Ever qualified for area, when we got to area, there was a lot of really good jumpers in our area meet, and Ever PR'd, he jumped a little over twenty-one feet to qualify for regionals. And so it took his best jump each week in order to get there, and he found a way to get it done, so we were very proud of Ever. Chris kind of tried a little bit of everything, he triple jumped, high jumped, ran a couple of relays, but I think he was at Harlingen, correct, it was the Harlingen meet, Coach Falcone, I believe, that he got out in the two-hundred, and he ran a PR in the two-hundred, I think he ran like low, a high twenty-two, and I said, "Hey, let's give this guy a chance on the four-by-two," and he stepped up, and he was a part of the four-by-two that ran the second fastest time in school history. So he did an excellent job this year stepping up. Some of the guys that aren't here, Isaiah Zapata, he qualified for area and then regionals, and each meet, he had to throw a PR at district in order to get to area, he had to throw a PR in area in order to get to regionals, and when he got to regionals, he was gonna have to really PR, but didn't quite do so well there, but he did a great job each week of getting better, getting better, and getting better. And he had a prior engagement tonight. Pete Perez was a regional qualifier in the four-by-two, the four-by-one, and then the triple jump, and he is on the All-Star team, the Valley All-Star Football Team, they had practice today. And then finally, Christian Peralas, is a district champ in the hundred, qualified for area, qualified for regional, is now going on to run at state track meet this week in Austin, Texas. And so we're looking forward to that, and we were talking, I think Mr. Rodriguez may be able to help us, we were trying to figure out, we can't remember the last time that there was a runner at the state track meet. We know there was a high jumper a few years ago, but the last time there was an actual runner down at state track meet, the Los Fresnos, so these guys did a great job.
Will the parents please stand and be recognized at this time?
I know we have an ESL program in our schools, and if you didn't understand half the stuff that Coach Ellison said, you can join the crowd, because he's speaking a different language, that's called East Texas. So if you need any help translating that cooter talk he just talked, let me know, I'm more than happy to help you out with that. Last but not least, a team that's still playing, that I've had the pleasure of watching many times this year, really got a pleasure out of watching them dominate Westlaco. One of their pitchers, actually, I feel bad, I guess a little bit, started crying, this is serious, started crying after these guys went on about a seven-run, ending it, ended up dominating them this weekend, very proud of them. I'd like to introduce Coach Moe.
Good evening, Ms. Peterson, and members of the board, and Mr. Salazar. Thank you for inviting us to the board meeting, and for your support throughout the year. We've had a great season, and are thankful to still be playing. The varsity baseball team currently has an overall record of twenty-three and four. We finished eleven and three in district in second place. In addition, we had a five-district playoff win over the weekend against Westlaco, which is always awesome to beat Westlaco. You know, we have an opportunity this weekend, we're playing at UTRGV against Laredo Alexander, ranked number seventeen in the state, so it'll be a great atmosphere for these kids, and these kids are not going to back down from anybody. They've been playing with a lot of heart all season long, and I wouldn't trade them for the world. All right, I'm going to introduce to you, number one, Miguel Gonzalez, junior. Number two, Charles Chapa, third baseman. Number three, Montano Reyna, catcher. Number four, Victor Montemayor, pitcher, outfielder. Number seven, Samuel Garcia, pitcher, outfielder. Number eight, George Villafranca, outfielder. Number nine, Zach Bridgewater, first baseman. He, we just received an email, he made a first-team All-State academic, so that's a great accomplishment Number ten, J.J. Sanchez. Number eleven, James Ramidis, catcher. He made second-team academic All-State. Number twelve, Nick Montemayor, he was honorable mention, academic All-State. Number fourteen, Hugo Sanchez, pitcher, infielder. Number twenty-two, Abel Rodriguez, second baseman. Number twenty-one, Christian Hernandez, pitcher, first baseman. Number twenty-three, Nicky Rod, outfielder. Number twenty-four, Lee Trevino, pitcher, outfielder. And number forty-two, Aaron Ramidis, second baseman. All right, our coaching staff is Alcencio Garza, also known as Chencio. These are accomplishments for the year. In a hundred years, I kind of, I don't know, back then, if they played baseball when the school opened up or not, but this is the first time in history that they've won twenty-plus games ever in Los Fresnos history. We're twenty-three and four, so that's a great mark for these kids, and that's one of the, if you've ever been to our baseball game, everybody would ask us, "Why is twenty-one up on the wall?" And that was one of the reasons. We had a friend here that passed away a while back, and me and him sat down and talked about what we needed to do to get to the next level, and we came up with a number twenty-one, which symbolizes, if we get twenty-one outs, we're going to win the game. And, you know, our goal every year is to win more than twenty-one games, and these guys are the first team to accomplish that, so it's a great honor to have these guys accomplish that record, and we're going to keep going. We're twenty-three and four, hopefully by Saturday, we'll be twenty-five and four. Okay, we had a thirteen-game win streak, you know, that's awesome, played thirteen games, we didn't lose in a month, so that's another accomplishment we've gotten. Okay, another thing, the first time of bi-district champs, so that's awesome. We went back-to-back in San Antonio and won the Edgewood Tournament in San Antonio, so that was great. And if you look at these guys here, we only have four seniors, four seniors in this bunch, so, you know, we're extremely proud of these guys, you know, being so young, and they're competing, you know, with older kids and stuff, so very proud of these guys, and we hope to see you guys there at UTRGV this weekend. We play Thursday at eight o'clock, Friday at seven, and Saturday morning at eleven. So I hope you guys come out and support these guys, and we're going to get after them, I'll tell you that much with this bunch of kids here. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you, guys, it's so neat seeing
It's, it's so, uh, neat seeing the school board members and different people out at different events. Uh, it means a lot when those kids see you guys out there, and, uh, thank you for supporting all of us, and, and obviously, it's important, or I wouldn't be missing football practice today, and neither would half these coaches, but it is important if these kids get recognized, and I just wanna say thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Now, at this time, I'm gonna call on our principal of Los Fresnos High School to introduce us to our mariachi instructor.
Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, uh, this year we brought on a new person in, in our Latin music area, very pleased, and just of the things that are happening in that area, uh, Mr. Hector Baromea, and he is here to introduce his mariachi.
Ms. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, uh, it is my pleasure to introduce our 2015-2016 mariachi, Nuevo Alcon. The first member that we have is our guitar player and vocalist, Ms. Magdalena Gomez. Our guitar player and vocalist, Irlanda Lozano. Our guitar player and soloist, Arnulfo Gonzalez. Guitar player and vocalist, Andres Roque. Our vihuela player, section leader, and soloist, Mr. Mauricio Alaniz. Our guitarrón player and grito specialist, uh, Mr. George Rodriguez. Our trumpet player and section leader, Mr. Miguel Gonzalez. Trumpet player and vocalist, Ms. Yamila de la Rosa. Our trumpet player, Mr. Yair Juárez Pérez. Our violinist, Jacqueline Rocha. Violinist, Clarissa García. Violinist and vocalist, Daniela Mata. And our violinist and also vocalist, Ms. Kiara Carrizales. A couple of awards, uh, that Mariachi Nuevo Alcon has received this year is receiving a first-division rating, superior, superior first-division rating at the, uh, region solo ensemble, a first-division superior rating at the state mariachi competition, the first annual mariachi competition at the state level. And, uh, they were one of eight six-A schools to receive it throughout the state, one of only fifteen, uh, schools to receive it throughout the state. And at the Port Isabel Mariachi competition, they received first place, uh, our JV received second place, and they, this group received, uh, best trumpet section, trumpet players, please raise your hand. Best armonía section, the rhythm section, please raise your hand. Best violins, please raise your hand. Best vocalists, please raise your hand. And, uh, grand champions as well. I just wanna take this time to, uh, really let you know how grateful I am. Uh, one, for the trajes that you have, uh, awarded the students this year, they have made a world of a difference in just how confident they, they feel and how presentable they are when they go to competitions and when they go to presentations, and that really goes a long way with the students in how they perform and how they play. And, uh, I wanna say that I'm also grateful, myself, uh, for coming to this district and how great it's been coming to the district and receiving so much support from the community, from the district, from the board members, from my principal, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you very much, and from Mr. Salazar as well. Uh, it's, it's really been a blessing coming here and finding the kind of talent that you can't find anywhere. And I think this program is really gonna go places, not because of myself, not because of Mr. Galcino, Mr. Longoria, but because of the kind of students that we have here in Los Fresnos that you can't find just anywhere else. Thank you very much.
No pressure at all.
No pressure.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, you, they can go, listen. Go that way to the parents.
El mariachi loco.
Grito. Okay, great. Oh, yeah. Parents, could you please stand and be recognized? Thank you, thank you so much. That was very impressive. Now, time for business. Item number six, district reports. Mr. Salazar, please.
Ms. Peterson, members of the board, we present our monthly reports to you, acknowledging that, and that, under letter B, that are, uh, slight concern under our tax collection reports. We, this happens from time to time, um, but we're gonna continue to monitor our tax collections and keep you informed. Otherwise, we're prepared to, uh, answer any questions in A, A through E, or entertain any questions you might have.
No questions.
There are no questions on item two, budget and tax calendar. We, we're a little behind, but do, but are doing our due diligence with personnel costs, which is the largest percentage of our, our budget. And, um, so we, we finished up our staffing meetings for middle schools this past week, and we'll continue to work and get caught up on our, our budget and tax calendar, uh, which serves as a guideline for us, really. Um, and the last item is our election calendar. We are required, uh, post, and we want, uh, in the next month, and so we wanted to bring you an election ca- calendar for the uniform election date of November eighth, 2016. Uh, those are all the items we have under reports.
Thank you. No one signed up for public audience, so we can move on to item number eight, consent agenda. There are eight items listed on the consent agenda. Do we need to go ahead and discuss any of these at this time? If not, do we have a motion? Mr. Trevino.
Yes, Ms. Peterson, I move that we approve consent agenda number one through eight, as written on today's agenda.
Thank you, there's a second. Mr. Fadias. All in favor to approve items one through eight, consent agenda, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, action items. Number one, discuss and take action to approve revisions to board operating procedures. Do we have a motion? Mr. Maya.
I move to approve the revision to discuss the, uh, (inaudible).
Thank you. Do we have a second, Ms. Garcia? Any discussion? All in favor to approve revisions to board operating procedures, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, discuss and take action to award CSP number fifteen through sixteen dash thirty-seven high school pavement rehabilitation, including alternate number one to R and R paving LLC. Do we have a motion? Mr. Garza.
I move to award CSP number fifteen dash sixteen dash thirty-seven high school pavement rehabilitation, including alternate number one to R and R paving LLC.
Do we have a second? Mr. Fadias. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number two, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, discuss and take action as necessary to approve application for expedited and general state waivers. A, request for two early release days for school year 2016-2017, and B, request for one additional staff development day for school year 2016-2017. Do we have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
I move that we approve the application for expedited and general state waivers for A, request for two early release dates for the school year 2016-2017, and B, a request for one additional staff development day for the school year 2016-2017.
Thank you, do we have a second? Mr. Trevino. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number three, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discuss and take action as necessary to revise board policies CH local and CV local adopted in first reading. Do we have a motion? Mr. Trevino.
Yes, Ms. Peterson, I move to approve, uh, to revise board policy CH local and CV local adopted in first reading.
Thank you, do we have a second? Mr. Maya. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number four, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discuss and take action to approve employment contracts for school years 2016, 2017, and 2017, 2018. A, administrative staff contract recommendations. Do we have a motion? Mr. Trevino.
Yes, Ms. Peterson, I move that we approve employment contracts for school years 2016 through 2017, and 2017 through 2018, administrative staff contract recommendations.
Do we have a second? It's just up to you. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number five, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discuss and take action to approve employment contracts for the 2016-2017 school year. A, campus professional staff contract recommendations. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Mr. Fadias. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number six, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2016-2017 school year. A, teachers, B, media specialists. Is there a motion? Mr. Trevino.
Yes, Ms. Peterson, I move to approve the superintendent's, uh, personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2016-2017 school year. A, teachers, B, media specialists.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number seven, please raise your hand. What the record shows, there's six in favor, and, and one extension. Okay, we don't have any closed, um, closed session, so we'll go on to announcements before that.
Ms. Peterson, members of the board, uh, tomorrow, Tuesday, May tenth, we have our student achievement banquet for Los Fresnos High School at the Brownsville Event Center. That starts at six-thirty PM. On Monday, June thirteenth, regular school board meeting, uh, here at the Training Center at six PM. And you heard the announcements about our baseball team playing Laredo Alexander within eight o'clock start time on Thursday. Those are all the announcements we have this time.
Thank you. And I know that we have the teachers and media specialists here tonight, and I would like you to stand and be recognized, please. First of all, I wanna say thank you for your patience. I know that we had a long meeting, but you stayed all the way through, and thank you for being here. I know you've had a long day, and then you've continued to be here with us tonight, so thank you. And good luck to you, and, and, uh, thank you for being in Los Fresnos. So if there's not any other announcements, it is seven oh eight, and I adjourn this meeting.